Motion please.
I'd like to make a motion coming into open session.
Second.
Those in favor?
Unanimous.
And we are now back into open session from our closed session meeting that we had starting at 6:30. Entertain a motion, please, regarding the business we conducted.
Madam Chair, it's my distinct pleasure to make a motion that we hire our county manager as Ms. Amy Cannon.
Second. That motion. Is that correct? Those in favor of that motion?
Unanimous.
Madam Chair.
Congratulations. You may, the audience may feel free to join us if you like. I would like to go ahead and finish first and then we'll make some comments.
Madam Chair, I would move that we enter into a contract with Ms. Cannon effective to date. And this contract is too lengthy to read all of it, but I would move that we hire Amy Cannon at a salary of $187,695 until change by action of the board, plus an employer 401K account contribution of 1% of her salary. Pay the county manager a monthly salary supplement in the amount of $700 in lieu of any in-county travel allowance with the full amount of this supplement being subject to all withholding and retirement contributions. And to pay the county manager the same amount of any annual stipend or bonus as is paid to all other county employees.
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion and the second. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Let me announce also that we are missing one person because of a death in the family and the person is, that's Commissioner Fairclough, and he is completing arrangements, no, it's not the arrangements because he's already had the funeral. The out-of-state business this week, and it was unanticipated. So that is the only reason that we do not have our seven of us here. It was a unanimous vote. May I, at this time, I'd just like to tell you that we did hire the Mercer Consulting Firm to conduct a nationwide county manager search. We received 59 applications for this process and including one from overseas. Early on in the process, the Mercer Group met with county commissioners and department heads in small groups to learn the characteristics and qualities that everybody wanted in our next county manager. Our former manager, Mr. James Martin, retired with 14 years of service. After narrowing the applicant pool, we interviewed two in-state and two out-of-state candidates. We were pleased with that hiring process. It was very thorough and very deliberate and we were, I was going to say almost unanimous or on the entire process from the beginning, but overwhelmingly, we voted to hire this search firm and to go through this process. Ms. Cannon really served as interim manager and she had, as interim manager while doing her own job and not having the county manager present, she had what was, in effect, an on-the-job interview. Because she had to do her job along with the rest of the management team, make up the slack for Mr. Martin while we were busy scrutinizing everything, she knew what we were doing, and then she had to present the county budget, which she did on May the 29th of this year. We feel that she has the experience and the skills to manage our government team for this county. She is very calm and committed, an excellent person to head this county and continue us on a road of fiscal responsibility. This is home for Amy Cannon, and she has worked with us for 24 years. We are, y'all, I just have to say, she's the first woman that we have had. I didn't really think about that through the whole process until somebody called it to my attention and said, "Have you ever had a woman as a manager?" I said, "No." And that was somebody who was asking me during the process of, "Have you finished? Have you finished yet? Have you finished yet?" No, we haven't. She holds, she's a native of Cumberland County, graduating from 71st High School. Thank you educators, all of you connected with education, thank you. She has, she holds an accounting degree from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, is a licensed public accountant, and a North Carolina certified government finance officer. She's been an employee for 24 years, became the deputy manager in February 2011 after previously serving. She came on with me as assistant county manager, so I can say we're both very experienced. She became assistant county manager in the year 2000, watch it, y'all. In the year 2000. And she was the county finance director from 1998 until August 2013. We will have more comments as it goes along, but I am five minutes into the meeting that was supposed to have started at 7 o'clock. But thank you Cumberland County educators, thank you Cumberland County employees, thank you Amy Cannon. I assume you accept.
Absolutely. I like that.
And from there or from there? Meanwhile, I'm going to get your contract.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just want to thank you for this wonderful opportunity and for the confidence that you've placed in me. We face some difficult financial challenges, but you have a group of individuals that are up for this challenge. I want to thank my family and the people that I work with, some dear coworkers, and everyone in the community that has expressed a tremendous amount of support for me and first of all, this board, not just today or for this action, but for the last 24 years. And I look forward to our shared vision of continuing to move this county forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, I move that we adjourn our...
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn our special meeting. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
I think it's all right if we're six minutes late once in a year, okay? And now I'd like to welcome you to our meeting tonight, which is a public hearing. And we are here tonight to hear what you have to say. We will not be engaging in dialogue with you. We will be taking notes. We will be going through the list. I think we have 20 odd people speaking tonight. There will be a timer employed and that will be about, I believe, about an hour of time. How many speakers?
We have a total of 19 speakers.
Okay, it's less than 20, it is 19. I want to thank you so much for coming to share your comments with us tonight. It is a very delicately balanced budget that we have, and we, as usual, are anxious to have the input of our citizens. It has been a long time since I have seen members of CCAE here, but welcome, you are here with your red shirt on and even a red hat. I know that you are here to, there you go. I know you are here and you also applaud us for the budget that we have given, the funding formula and the $89 million, is it 89 or 80?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, well, it's almost 80 million dollars that we give you every year as a part of our budget. So thank you, and I think, since I'm one of you, I thank you too for coming. Should we have a prayer, Mr.?
I think you might need one.
I think we need a prayer. Stand up, please, and join me. Heavenly Father, we gather tonight to listen to comments on our budget. We know that even though we are enjoying some difficult times, we are still enjoying them because we are here on this earth, and we are here to learn how to serve you better. It is our role to serve the citizens of our county and to do the very best job that we can and to operate efficiently and effective for the benefit of our citizens. And we hope, as usual, in a strong fiscal manner. Guide us and direct us as we not only deliberate this week, tonight, but through all of the deliberations that we have. Amen. And join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm not that heavy, but the rollers won't roll on this chair. Madam Clerk.
Open the public hearing.
I need to, I think, first officially open the public hearing. And we have 19 speakers and they will have a total of up to...
Three minutes.
Three minutes, not to exceed three minutes. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Shelby Townsend.
Thank you. I'm so happy about what just happened here, I forgot what I was going to say.
That's all right.
There is no finer person in this county than Amy, and it is with no disrespect that I call her Amy. She is our friend.
Okay. Give the lady 14 more seconds.
I believe all of you have my packet.
Yes.
I accept your decision regarding funding for a spay and neuter program for Cumberland County. I accept that and understand it. However, I respectfully submit Plan B, which is right here. And the beauty of this plan is that the people who benefit from this spay and neuter program are the people who contribute to pay for it. They are the violators, the pet tax, everything that comes into animal control from the pet owners. I would ask that you assign a percentage of those fees to a spay and neuter program. My program, of course, is the big fix, and I hope it will be that one, but if it's not, if you have something better in mind, I would back that 100%. And the beauty of this thing, another one, is that this is not an additional expense for Cumberland County, it's just a reassignment of certain animal control revenue. And animal control will benefit greatly from this program. We do a lot of stuff for animal control and prevent many, many animals from ever entering the shelter. And this figure that I'm about to give you varies from time to time, but I would say $85 is close to an average of what you can expect to pay, this county can expect to pay from the time an animal is picked up by animal control until it is processed, housed the required time, and euthanized and disposed of. We prevent that. That is $85 saved for every animal that does not go there. I have nothing else to add except that thank you so much. The last time we met, I asked you to unchain this county, and you did. Now, we're ready to move forward again. We need to go on into the 21st century. We could be a role model for North Carolina. I get calls every day from people asking me, "How do y'all do it? Where'd y'all get that $25 program? How'd you get them dogs unchained?" And I said, "Send me your strongest leader, must be a control freak, and I will go over every detail of our programs, but I will not go into your county." Well, they can't find that person, but hopefully they will. This is something that we all need to consider, and I'm very proud of the progress that animal control has made. They have many wonderful programs, and there is no finer person than Jennifer Tracy, who is our shelter manager. I talk with her daily and we work together, and they reach out to me and they help me. Thank you.
A good night. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gail Riddle.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, and Audience Members, I stand before you to thank you for your past support of the Cumberland County Library System. It's been only one year since the library was honored with the National Medal for Library and Museum Services at an impressive ceremony in Washington, DC. While we are thrilled to have earned such an honor, we haven't been resting on our laurels. In fact, as the world continues to evolve at an ever-increasing pace, the library continues to adapt to the times, offering new products and services to the citizens we serve. There was a time when libraries were simply a repository for books, a place where people went to borrow those books. These offerings have now expanded to include CDs and DVDs as well as eBooks and digital magazine collections. The library's mission has also expanded, as people now come to a library not only for materials that will enlighten, entertain, and edify, but also for access to computers and the internet. They come to libraries for meetings and gatherings of like-minded learners, as libraries now offer programs for all ages. Equally significant, as we continue to experience an economic malaise, it is the role the library has taken to continue an economic development. Today, our libraries are the sites for effective job fairs resulting in real connections between job seekers and employers. For those who need help in negotiating a job search, classes are available for resume writing, interview skills, and research on prospective employers. You, as Commissioners, through the wise use of tax dollars, provide the most significant source of funding for this system. You know how effective the library is in assisting the citizens of this county, including our many military families, in leading fuller and more informed lives. Last year, in an unofficial survey, the Cumberland County Public Library and Information Center was voted as the best use of tax dollars in this county. The task is now to continue to support the libraries at a significant level of funding. Please remember what is available for you at your local library, and best of all, the effective librarians who help you to navigate it all. Our library needs continued funding to serve our citizens and develop collections and strategies to serve them even better in the future. It's an arduous task, but one in which we will continue to serve because our library is helping to transform our community by anticipating future needs. So again, I thank you for your past support and ask you for your continued support for this, your public library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Knight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In the, I am the vice president-elect of the Friends of the Library of Cumberland County. In the past, the county has been very gracious towards supporting the Cumberland County library system, and we are very appreciative of that. As Friends of the Library, we share the belief that a strong public library is the informational, educational, cultural, and recreational heart of the community. With programs and resources available with topics ranging from birth to the aging and beyond, the library intentionally stimulates 21st century learning and continues to strive for excellence in serving our communities while linking, linking them to valuable services and resources. As you know, the library keeps abreast of the latest trends, technology, information, and resources. This in turn is a major contribution in helping residents to thrive and aids in fostering well-rounded and responsible citizens of Cumberland County and abroad. As an avid user of the library, more than 10 years ago, I was able to launch my personal company, Knight Consultant LLC. This company has been instrumental in helping community-based nonprofits help hundreds of families receive needed services and grant assistance, assisting in the expansion of businesses and ministries around the county, and it continues to help people to achieve their greatest dreams of entrepreneurship. Okay. I've always considered the library as an extension of my office, and it's been a lifesaver for my children, who uses the offices for their school assignments. For thousands of other patriots like me, your continued support will help the library system to remain strong and competitive across the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Minz.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Ms. Cannon, congratulations, staff, and audience. First of all, I want to thank you all for the work that you do. You and your families sacrificed, thank you very much, sacrifice because you work every day of the year and I believe almost every night of the year as well. Thank you for the service you give this community. I'm here to say thank you also for the recognition that you've had that the cultural arts industry is vital to any community and that every community must be competitive and can't be competitive without a cultural arts industry. We have provided to you the Arts Council's, this is a snapshot of the Arts Council's work from last year. Remember, as you look through it, that you will see direct funding and support going to the nonprofit cultural industry through the community. Some of the highlights you'll see, of course, are the International Folk Festival, where you see a great many, 80,000 people plus coming to attend, but over 1,000 people from this community work together to bring you that festival. If you go further, you will see that last year we worked in 84 schools in Cumberland County and had a significant outreach to those, to those young people and educators, and we applaud you all. Thank you for the work you do. You'll see Anne Frank exhibit that happened. That was, we kept the Arts Council open for seven days a week for five straight weeks to help teach schoolchildren and the citizens of this community that even the smallest amount of intolerance and bullying, if fostered, can have catastrophic results. You will see a list of over 30 organizations so that when you see Arts Council in your budget, you really need to see those schools and those organizations who are funded directly through that. You will, as we pass through, see Dickens Holiday, which is a wonderful opportunity for our community to come together and celebrate the beginning of that December holiday time. You will see an amazing number of volunteers who are working through the Arts Council, and you will see that the Arts Council's budget that year, for every dollar we received, no matter what its source, 55 cents was spent on support to organizations, schools, and artists, 33 cents were spent on community celebrations and developments, and 12% on administration. Your second page is the page that in 2010, we engaged in an economic study, economic impact study in this community. The study partners, this was through Americans for the Arts, the study partners with the Conference of Mayors, National Association of Counties, National League of Cities, Conference of State Legislatures. This was a great study. And from that, just take, if you don't read anything else, please read that first segment. 24 cultural nonprofit organizations, 50, almost $54 million, and supported 1,700 full-time equivalent jobs, and I thank you very much for listening to it.
Our next speaker is Betsy Small.
Hello, I'm Betsy Small, and I'm a Commissioner with the town of Linden and also a member of the library trustee board. It's wonderful to come and speak to you tonight, Madam Chairperson, and also the Commissioners, and congratulations to our new county manager. I'm bringing a local perspective to you. Not only do I serve in the town of Linden, but the community of Linden. And I just wanted to let you know how the programs you've been supporting through the library have touched the town of Linden and the community of Linden. The Linden community would like to recognize the Cumberland County Library System for providing additional reading experiences for our community. Our community library is provided with a core collection of books for all ages through the mobile outreach program that you have funded for the Cumberland County Libraries. The first Monday of every month, the North Regional Branch also sends a youth services librarian to conduct library time, storytime. This storytime is for preschool students, and I wish you could see the little faces that are so excited about the puppet shows and the books that are read to them and the excitement that the youth services librarians bring to these storytimes. We would also like to thank Jody, the library director, Jane Casto, the headquarters librarian, director, excuse me, Mary Campbell, North Regional Director, and Susan Weigle, Youth Services Director in the North Regional Branch, and Robin Miller, who is one of our librarians who comes out and reads to our children at storytime. We would also like to thank Rick Glazer for putting us in touch with all these wonderful programs that you have funded through the library so that we can bring these additional reading experiences to our children and to people of all ages. Again, I wish you could see sometimes when the children just come tumbling out of the car and running into the community library, and they're right down on their knees and they are going through those books and having a great time. We serve not only those voracious readers, but we serve those timid readers who need a little extra time and a little extra support and a little extra help in choosing their library books. We've tried to make our library as customer-friendly and as kid-friendly as possible, and we think that we are meeting those needs. So again, thank you for your support through the years and the continued support for the Cumberland County Library System. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alizadea Ray.
Hello, my name is Alizadea Sebastian Ray. I'm 10 years old. I'm a homeschool fifth grader from District 7. I'm 10 years old. The library's always been like a second home to me. It's somewhere where I can go and, where everyone can go, and people feel welcomed and do whatever you want, except to be quiet, of course. The library is somewhere where all people, as a family, can go when the library opens up, as usually is 7:30 back in Florida and now here in North Carolina, and just go until the library closes and have a great time. The library is somewhere where I love to go to expand my learning abilities with so many things, especially for reading. I take many classes at the library that they have for subjects that helps me with my school assignments. I always use books at the library for my history site, my history... I always use books at the library for my history sci, my history papers. They even have math books at the library as well. I also read to little kids at the storytime at the library, and it's actually kind of funny because the children, they don't like it when the librarians or the adults read to them. But when they see like another child can read as well and just a few years older, makes them think, well, I can read as well. And it really makes me feel proud of myself that I just made a kid want to read. And in early May of this year, I will say 2014 Student Library Ambassador for NCLA, NCLA 2014 Student Library Ambassador, to advocate the library and speak to congressmen. And I hope the library always be promoted and get new books every week. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angela Ray.
That's a hard act to follow.
You sure you want to follow him?
I want to go behind my son's. Well, hello, everybody. My name is Angela Ray, and I'm the Secretary for the Friends of the Library, and I'm also a educator. The young gentleman ahead of me was my wonderful son, Alistair. My husband and I, we are so proud of him and all his achievements, and we always made a priority to take him to the library at an early age, and it fostered his love of reading so young. And it made a pathway for him for all the opportunities that he, that came into his path only at 10 years old. And I feel like the library do so much for families because we utilize all the activities at the library. Living in South Florida for seven years and moving here, you know, we feel like, that so many people don't realize what you can receive from a library, from the programs, from events, especially for the kids, because Alistair has a lot of friends who never even had a library card, and it was very surprisingly because we just assumed that everybody went to the library and had a library card, but, you know, I just feel like if you make that priority in a child's life, they will love reading, and it will make avenues for them in their whole life. And we really promote the library, and we hope that the funds stay with the library because it makes a difference in the kids and also adult lives as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Harold Williams.
Good evening. First of all, I have to apologize because what I'm up here for is, is a need in the Linden community, and I'd have to say that I didn't know it was, that we had a Commissioner, so I fell through the cracks, partly for my own reasons. Spent a lot of time in Vietnam. My son don't live in the county anymore, and we had an after-school program, which some of the children through the after-school program did not fall through the cracks. So what we are asking basically is a building, a little recreational area for them, and some funds to keep them out of the streets. We surely thank you that we do have the privilege of the law coming down about every week. But what we are trying to do is we're trying to keep them out of jail and into a place of learning so that they can be better and proper citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bertha Williams.
I didn't hear the name.
Bertha Williams.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I'm gonna piggyback on my husband. What we're here for are to request funds for a building. First of all, in order to get some programs in place, we need a building. So we're requesting funds to lease this building so we can provide these activities for the youth, for the adults. We would like technology skills, computers, and all these things, but for starters, a building. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Margie Whitehead. I'm sorry, Ms. Margie Whitehead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Margie Whitehead. I am coordinator for the citizens surrounding the township of Linden. We are economically deprived area, requesting the county's help. As taxpayers, we have not been afforded access to many county-provided services. We do not have an accessible library. We do not have a recreation center. We do not have a park or tutors for the disadvantaged children. You know, what do you say to children that have no place to go or to play, like other children do? We are 12 to 15 miles from the nearest recreation center, and I read somewhere that every child would be within two miles of a park. We have been paying for parks and recreation taxes for more than 35 years. We do not, and, and I repeat, we, we have not been serviced by you at all. You have to take us into consideration. So until we can get a rec center, we are requesting that funds are provided to lease a building, and I hope that Linden is taken into consideration during the budget distribution. We are an entire community of men, women, children, 8,000 to 10,000 people. We're not an organization. We've just been left behind. We can't even begin to help these kids, even, you know, if they should, should need help over the summer. We have no transportation to get them to Fayetteville. We are up in the corner, Cumberland County, and we have been totally forgotten, and you let us fall through the cracks, so pull us out. We need that building. We need a recreation center, but until we can get one, there is a building that we can lease to get started. So please help us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Hunt.
How you doing? Good evening. Congratulations, Ms. Cannon, on your appointment to the Honorable Chairperson and Board of Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Hunt. I'm President and CEO of the Spring Lake Chamber of Commerce in Spring Lake, North Carolina. With the looming move of the 440th, if the city of Fayetteville catches a cold, the town of Spring Lake will catch pneumonia. So I just want you to keep that in mind. The U-44 project was to help soldiers and uniformed, ununiformed personnel easy access on and off Fort Bragg. But the primary beneficiary of the U-44 project as, as this date has been Harnett County. We have seen numerous businesses relocate from the town of Spring Lake because of the looming expansion of Highway 87. Entities such as Wendy's, the coffee scene, and Bojangles have moved out to Harnett County, which Cumberland County does not receive any revenue or tax base for. There are 21 other lesser businesses who have closed or relocated into Harnett County. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is that since this board has sought, seeing in its great wisdom, to continue to invest in economic development in Spring Lake, Phase Three of RLM Communication is happening right now, with 15 permanent jobs coming at a high rate. A new state-of-the-art storage facility is located on Chapel Hill Road and Highway 210 with three permanent jobs. Their grand opening is July 9th. You all are invited. A new regional recre, veterinarian rehabilitation facility is under construction on Odell Road, which will employ 10 additional employees, and it is recognized as a regional resource for Cumberland County. Also, there's a new market rate, 250 single-family homes being announced and proposed on Highway 210, and a new green community called Boswellwood on Chapel Hill Road. The time to continue to invest is now in Spring Lake. In order for us to keep the momentum going and create meaningful jobs for our residents, we need your continued investment in economic development in Spring Lake. Again, I'm just talking about a total of $20 million that just announced in proposed development in Spring Lake and 28 permanent jobs. So your investment actually does create jobs, and we need it in Spring Lake, and we hope that you see fit to, in your infinite wisdom, to continue to invest in Spring Lake economic development through the Spring Lake Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of my Board of Directors and the Board of Directors of the Spring Lake Economic Development Corporation, we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Judge Beth Kiefer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I want to thank you for your wise choice of Amy Cannon as our new county manager, and I want to bring once again to your attention, as we have now opened the new detention center, that it's time for the county to move its offices out of the courthouse. We are in desperate need of additional courtroom space. You will note in the budget that was submitted by our county manager that one of the things in there is an additional attorney and paralegal for the Department of Social Services. Based on the 23% increase in foster care placement over the last year, we are see, seeing an epidemic of number of children that are coming into the court system. My juvenile court is running until 6:30, 7:30, 8 o'clock some nights, and regularly until 6:00 or 6:15. I need to be running DSS Court every week. We now run it every other week, and we add additional time for that. I don't have a courtroom to put those folks in at this moment in time, so that means that we are continuing to run overtime with regard to that. I know that Ms. Cannon has advised me that they're working on the capital plan. We've talked before about the capital plan, including some movement so that we can expand the court system. We are using the detention center courtroom every day. We're using this courtroom two days every week. We just don't have any place to put those. The one courtroom I have that I conceivably might be able to move our folks to has no waiting area, which is the courtroom on the fourth floor, and that waiting area has been taken over by the DA's office for additional office space. And I can't run a juvenile courtroom without waiting area because that's a private courtroom, and the folks waiting to come into the courtroom must sit outside of the courtroom before that can happen. So I just bring that to your attention once again and ask that you take that into consideration as we move forward because we know even once you move out, it's going to take considerable period of time to outfit this building for additional courtroom space. On a happier note, you'll be glad to know that my, I anticipate that we will start our veterans' court within the next three months. Today, we begin the advertisement for the coordinator for that court, and we're looking to begin shortly after, sometime after July the 1st. The Governor's Crime Commission has indicated the money will be available for that court, and we are looking forward to starting that. So I thank you for your help in that area and look forward to continuing to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Clyde Bond.
Madam Chairman, gentlemen, how are you, y'all, this evening? My name's Clyde Bond. I'm the President of the Cumberland County Veterans Council this year, and I guess I'm stuck with it again next year, too. I just wanted to come before you and thank you for your support that you give us on behalf of the 47,000 veterans in the surrounding area. We really appreciate it. And Judge Kiefer, we're looking forward to getting this court off the ground. So any way that we can help you, you just let us know. Once again, I just came to thank you for your support and your continued support, and anything that the Veterans Council can do for you, you let us know.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Sors.
Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners and Ms. Cannon. Congratulations. My name's Joseph Sors. I'm President of the Cumberland County Association of Educators. We're affiliated with the NCAE, which is a national, which is a North Carolina Association of Educators, and the NEA, which is the National Education Association. We advocate for educators and students in Cumberland County, and today, that's why I'm here. I'm also here to thank you for an agreement with the Cumberland County School Board that allows for an increase, I understand, of 1% in a recommended budget for Cumberland County schools. That is terrific. We all know it takes a village to raise a child. Here's some of the villagers that you need to know about. Bus drivers. They're usually the first person children see as they begin the school day. How children start their day is important to how the rest of the day goes. Drivers are also some of the only contacts some of us teachers have with the parents. Drivers are responsible for the safety and well-being of the children that they transfer, transport to school, to and from school. Another villager is the cafeteria workers. They just don't prepare and serve breakfast and lunch to the children. They also encourage them to have a good day. They support their nutritional needs, and many of these children come to school with a lot of nutritional needs. They play a very important role in a student's life at school. Oh, yes, the custodians. They work hard to keep our school buildings clean, comfortable, and safe. They also interact with students every day. I bet if you ask your child, they know the first name of their custodian at their school. And finally, teacher assistants. In addition to helping classroom teachers with lesson plans and activities that they do during the day, they serve as hallway monitors, cafeteria monitors, bus drivers, clerical assistants for administrators, vision screeners, and sometimes nurse assistants, because sometimes we only have one nurse at our school one day a week. And actually, there's no better way to, to meet the individual needs of a student than to have a teacher assistant in a classroom with a highly qualified teacher. And finally, the teachers. Those teachers in Cumberland County are committed to developing and responsible lifelong learners in the classroom. And due to our state budget, legislator's budget, we appreciate what you've done to help make up that, and hopefully, we can save some jobs with the money that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Taylor. Greg Taylor.
First, I congratulate Ms. Amy. Looking forward to working with you. I had prepared substantially more than three minutes' worth of comments, but I'm going to condense them quick. And I spoke to Amy earlier today, and I know one of the things that, the questions that came up was the rental of the building. You are the only county in our partnership that's in our budget on the expense side for $18,000 in rent. And again, our request is $20,500 total. In the packets that you've gotten, put in there some information about our historic success and also the recent accomplishments. You'll see something on the Sustainable Growth Management Strategy that was completed this year. Your planning department was very engaged in that and resulted in all of the planning departments in the region getting software that allows them to do consolidated planning, either as a region or as counties within the region, or even municipalities and counties within the region. You also see a document on the mental health collaboration that has been very successful. We continue to engage with, with that group to address the issues that were identified in that document you have. Also, you may not know that we were selected as the 2013 ADC Defense Community of the Year last year. And also in that packet is our proposed work plan for 2014 and 15, which we will be presented to our board later this month for their consideration. Federal efforts, we continue to prepare for the next round of BRAC. We were the only We were the only organization, those of you who attended, who responded to the specifics of the Army 2020. If you want to change a decision like that or like the next BRAC, you need to be able to address the logic that they use to come to the decision. Just saying that you're going to be affected adversely economically is not going to change anybody's mind. Work with the contractor that's in the process of being hired by the state, we'll be working with them on that. Also, in our ADC engagement, I serve as co-chair of the Veterans and Military Families Council for the Association of Defense Communities, and I'm also a member of the Federal Outreach Advisory Committee for that organization. We're still working with them to try to address the impact aid shortfall that our military communities are feeling. Cumberland County, that's a tune of about $8 million a year. We have volunteered, we're working with Senator Heitkamp in our council that I co-chair, to develop some new veterans legislation, and I volunteered our region to serve as one of the pilot communities for that. And as you know from the decline in your sales tax collections, decision-making at the federal level does have local repercussions. Last year, we put in for a defense industry adjustment grant, or we were going to, but we didn't have the job loss qualifications. They've expanded that, and they're allowing the state to do it. We are going to be approaching the state about partnering to do that defense industry grant, and also, I didn't get to talk about 331 partnerships, but you'll see a significant engagement from us in that arena going forward. Seymour Johnson has already identified 30-some potential opportunities for 331 public-public partnerships with their surrounding communities. I think we will identify many, many more. And in fact, we're already working on a couple. Thank you.
Our 16th speaker is Mr. Don Williams.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Boys and Girls Clubs for the summer program. Y'all have funded me the last couple of years, and I'm hoping to get funded this year. The funding that I use, what y'all give me, is for scholarships to needy families. Last year, we gave out 40 scholarships to kids who couldn't afford to come to the Boys and Girls Club on a weekly basis, and hopefully, I'll be able to get that this year so that the kids could continue to participate in the summer camp program, which will start on June the 11th and end on August the 22nd. And the kids get a chance to do a wide range of events on a daily basis. And with our partnership with the Cape Fear Tutoring Program, the kids will get to have lunch and a snack every day. So that's going to be new to our program, and I just hope that we can count on you all for funding for the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liberta Robertson.
Madam Chairperson, good evening, and good evening to the commissioners, and congratulations to you also, Sister Cannon. It is indeed a pleasure for me to stand before you today. I am the secretary of the Linden Community Enhancement Association, so I greet you and I come before you in that capacity. We're asking you to help us today. Note, I said "help." We're not asking you to do it all. We're simply asking you to help us. We're asking you to help us by providing us with a building for recreation. When you hear the word "recreation," a lot of times, people think about playing basketball, playing skates, roller skating. We're not talking about doing those things. We're talking about providing a building where we can get together and organize, distribute information. We can provide tutorial services to children in school. We can help young children with EOG prep. We have senior citizens in the outline communities who really don't understand what prescriptions the doctors are giving them. We have persons, volunteers, nurses, who will go to the doctor with those persons. But we need a building to organize those things, a space to work from. We're asking for that kind of help. We envision having GED classes. We envision providing skill classes. What kind of skill classes, Liberta, are you talking about? We're talking about painting classes. We're talking about small engine repair classes. We're talking about bricklaying classes, providing young men and women with GED services as well as a skill that they can learn so that they will be more productive as citizens. We want to be able to provide resource information. There are a lot of services that the county is providing that a lot of our citizens don't know about. We want to be a source of information for them. We have several volunteers already. We're working on our community emergency preparers classes. We're asking you to provide us with a building so that when the person comes in, we don't have to have part of the class here, have part of it at a house, a part of it at a church, or maybe try to get together, get a small group together, go to someone else's recreation center downtown to complete the first aid class. We want to be able to provide that service to our community. We're asking you to help us simply by providing us with a recreation building, a building to help further educate and expand the services to our needy citizens. Again, we thank you, and we ask your help.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra McMillan.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me have these few minutes to speak. My name is Sandra McMillan, and I work for the Cumberland County School System. I have been a bus driver for 28 years. I started out as one of the first adults in the county, and I'm still driving. I also work with child nutrition, work in the school cafeteria. I've been doing that for right at 24 years now. I understand there's in the budget to increase our salaries, and I'm asking you to look at this because I know from my personal experience that I only live off of what I make from my job for 12 months. I earn it for 10, I live off of it for 12. There's drivers that come aboard, that's new drivers, they're making almost as much as I am, and I've been driving for 28 years. And a teacher's assistants, I know from experience, from being a teacher's assistant, what goes into that. You're a mother, you're a doctor, you're a lawyer, you're a teacher, because I've been there, and I do that on the bus also. Little children get on there at 6 o'clock, 6:15 in the morning. They're crying. They're upset for some reason or another. Then us bus drivers, we have to calm them down. So as you look at your budget, please consider teachers, teacher's assistants, and bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, and the job that we do for the county. I thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Kristi Davis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kristi Davis. I'm a teacher in Cumberland County schools, and they asked me to advocate for our classified personnel, and I'm speaking to the position to please either fund the positions that are currently held or to increase the salary of those people. What is the value of public service, and what is the value of helping a child? Teacher assistants, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and custodians are not merely positions. They're very caring people, and they're very necessary to our school staffs. That, like Mr. Sorsy said, they're the first faces the students see in the morning, and they set the mood for the day. We're all thinking the same thing. The students are very important, the people are very important and necessary to a school staff. From personal experiences, the TAs at my school, we turn to them to translate from Spanish-speaking parents that we can't speak to, and then we call them, and they help us out. They're called to check for lice. Sometimes, they have to change diapers. I've seen them help children learn to read, work with math manipulatives, and supervise students while the classroom teachers have meetings or testing obligations. These folks are the ones the children turn to when they have problems, good news to share, or shoes to tie. Our students crave attention. Some have physical needs like food and clothing. Others need extra academic help. Our classified staff fill these needs for our students and perform many other tasks that need adult supervision, such as bus drivers, traffic control, lunchroom duty, and testing monitors. And I ask that you please consider using some county funding to at least keep the limited number of classified personnel we have, or increase the funding that is provided through the state and the county. Thank you very much.
This concludes our public hearing for tonight on the budget. And for the, we thanked the 19 speakers, but more than that, we thank all of the citizens and department heads, just everyone who has taken the time to come out, to participate in this process. This is the public part of our process. We will give this information to staff. If other information is needed from you, you will be contacted through the information that you have left with our clerk. All right? We urge you to continue to participate in the process, not only now, but throughout the year. To those of you who just came to thank us, thank you so much for thanking us. We appreciate that. There will absolutely never be enough money to do every single thing. We know that. But thank you for investing a part of your limited free time that you have to come out and give your opinions, share your opinions with us. If there are no more speakers coming before us, then we will adjourn this meeting. We have three meetings scheduled this week, or four, one of them, I don't know. But we have a series of meetings scheduled this week. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Those in favor of adjourned, motion by...
Motion to adjourn.